Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Asheville City Schools Board of Education Regular Board Meeting for tonight, Monday, June 12th, 2023. We're excited for a great final regular board session of this school year. We will, we have a quorum, so we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance tonight from Ms. Kickert's second grade class from Claxton.
A pledge allegiance to the flag.
And united as one America.
And to the republic.
Which stands one nation.
Under God and indivisible.
With liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you very much. I'm going to ask for a motion for the approval of the agenda with one change. That's, that's the, that was the change. With one change to the agenda, which is after action items and before superintendent's report, we're going to hear a recommendation from Melissa Bates about the RFP for child nutrition for next year. So if I can.
So moved.
It is moved? Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. All right, so the agenda is passed. And so we will start with April Dockery and our good news.
Thank you, Board Chair, Superintendent Dr. Cosby, and Board members. Thank you for this opportunity to come before you tonight and share the good news for June 2023. We would like to take a moment and celebrate the class of 2023. I would also like to thank the administration and the staff that did a lot of work to pull off a beautiful graduation ceremony. We were so fortunate to have it on our own campus, and it was quite lovely. And as a mother of a 2023 graduate, I'm very grateful. The 21st Century Community Learning Center after-school sites have had a wonderful and successful program this year. They served approximately 150 students at four of our elementary schools. The 21st Century programs in Asheville City Schools are staffed with an amazing team dedicated to providing the best after-school experiences possible. The students were given daily opportunities for academic support, social-emotional learning activities, literacy and math, as well as arts enrichment. Students also engage with multiple community resources for their students. For example, Bricks for Kids, a LEGO building experience, was a tremendous hit. I can see why. Bricks for Kids facilitated four eight-week sections in our programs this year. Family involvement is an essential component to this 24th Century program. Each site hosted multiple family engagement events that included food, fellowship, and celebrations. Family celebration events' themes included a fall festival, a Valentine's Day dance, which I participated in, and it was amazing, butterflies and books, and a luau. Several of the family events included literacy stations where district staff gave out books, pencils, journals to every student who attended. The great turnout for these engagements were representative of the success of this amazing program. While it is unfortunate that the state is not providing 21st Century grants to our cohort for next year, we are thrilled to have secured funding through a Dogwood Health Trust grant that will allow us to continue with our elementary after-school programs for this next coming school year. If you are a member of that team, will you please come forward? Any of our 21st Century? You'll come up to the board. We're going to take a quick picture. We'd also like to thank CNI and Melissa Hett for working so hard to get that Dogwood Trust funding for us for next year. Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Purley, come on up. Poor Ms. Purley has had to spend her entire day with me today. Congratulations to our Isaac Dixon Elementary School Child Nutrition Manager, Ms. Purley Hamilton, for being named the winner of the Educational Snacks National School Lunch Hero Contest this year. Ms. Purley is only one of three winners across the country, but she will always be number one for us. We are so honored to have Ms. Purley in our Asheville City Schools family. I don't know how many years you've served, but you've been here all the time. She is an educator that loves each and every one of our students and works hard to serve them every single day, and we are so grateful. I'm going to take a picture of you real quick. Thank you, Ms. Purley. This is another emotional one, as some of our retirees are in the room with us tonight. Earlier today, we celebrated our retirees for the 2223 school year. We had 16 people retire this year. We would like to thank each and every one of you for all of your hard work, dedication, countless hours, tremendous amount of love that you have poured into Asheville City Schools for countless years. If you are here tonight, would you please come forward so we can honor you? Thank you, Jenny. Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Asheville City Schools would like to provide recognition to the EC behavioral support team, sport, support team, they are sport team, sorry, support team for their work across the district during the 2223 school year. This team, these team members are part of grand, grant funded through the Exceptional Children's Department and share the goal of improving and enhancing our school's intensive behavior practices. The grant is focused on providing students with systems of support to succeed in school while decreasing the use of exclusionary disciplinary practices. The team members include Daniel Crone, Cassandra Ingram, D'Angelo Collins, Miranda Williams, Erica Howard, and Becca Nessler. This team is led by Daniel Crone, an ACS behavioral liaison. Daniel has served in Asheville City Schools since 2008 in a number of capacities, as an instructional assistant, an EC teacher, and Title I and MTSS roles. He lives here in Asheville with his family and has two children, two children are ACS Cougar Cubs at Jones Elementary School. Ms. Cassandra Ingram has been a part of the Cougar family for many years and in many capacities. She is known throughout our community for her therapeutic support, mentorship, and family advocacy. This year, her work has been at Jones and Herring Elementary Schools, as well as Asheville Middle School. She has over 34 years of service in our state. D'Angelo Collins is an Asheville High School alumni. And has worked for Asheville City Schools since 2122. He works with several community organizations and is a leader of our community partner, My Daddy Taught Me That. This year, he has worked at Hall Fletcher and Isaac Dixon Elementary School. Miranda Williams is also an Asheville High School alumni, currently working on her degree from North Carolina Central University. Her area of study is criminal justice with a focus of societal barriers and stay out of, and stay out of the correctional system. This year, she has primarily worked at Montford North Star Academy, but has supported several elementary schools as well. Erica Howard is also an Asheville High School alumni and has earned a degree from North Carolina A&amp;T University in psychology. This school year, she was honored as a keynote speaker in our avid banquet. Her behavior support work, I should know this off the top of my head, I'm sorry, Erica, has been at Isaac Dixon and the Educational Career Academy and Asheville High School. Becca Nessler is a Western North Carolina native and graduate of Lauren Wilson, my alumni. She previously worked in the field of behavioral health services to case manage and provide community-based services to children and adults. She also owns and operates an organic farm in Western North Carolina with her family. She has two children that both attend Asheville City Schools. Go Cougar Clubs! If you are here tonight, please come forward so we can take a quick picture. Would any of you like to say a few words? Would any of you like to speak just for a minute?
Yeah, I'm just honored to have worked with the team that I did this year, and I just really want the board to know how much they've done to support students across the district. Nearly all of our school campuses and really, you know, close to 30 students have received direct support from the team, so I just want to say thank you to them.
And that concludes this month's good news. Thank you.
Thank you, April. Next on the agenda is public comment. The Board of Education greatly appreciates your interest in the Asheville City Schools, and we welcome your comments to the board. Please be mindful of the following guidelines. Personnel and student matters are confidential and therefore are not appropriate for public comment. therefore are not appropriate for public comment. If you have a concern about an employee or a student matter, please contact or see the superintendent after the meeting. If you have a concern about an employee or a student matter, please -- I just said it. Sorry. The board permits public comment on issues relevant to and within the jurisdiction of the school district. Although an individual may identify themselves as a candidate for any public office, no person may use the public comment portion of a board meeting to actively campaign for or endorse a specific candidate running for public office. Persons are not limited from speaking on issues relevant to the official business of the school system. For purposes of this policy, active campaigning includes but is not limited to asking for support for a candidate running for public office and/or stating what a candidate will do if elected to public office. Unless otherwise approved by the board, the total time for public comment shall not exceed 30 minutes for in-person and 15 minutes for virtual speakers. Members of the public may speak for three minutes. The time remaining is indicated by lights directly in front of you. Multiple speakers from a group who are presenting on the same topic may choose to elect one speaker for the group. If a single speaker is used by any group, they shall be allocated five minutes instead of the three. If an unusually large number of people wish to speak, the board may decide to reduce the time allotted to each speaker or require the designation of a group spokesperson. Please be respectful. A disruption by any person or persons of a public meeting will not be tolerated and can result in removal from the meeting. Incorrect or misleading information presented by a speaker may be responded to at the direction of the chairperson. Public comment allows you to provide the Board of Education with your thoughts and relevant information concerning the Asheville City Schools. Therefore, board members will not normally respond to individuals who address the board, except to request clarification. And so with that, we will get started. First on our list, please forgive me if I'm mispronouncing your name, Courtney Bossman Besman. And Ms. Besman, you'll have three minutes.
To speak a moment on critical race theory and programs that have followed, like SEL, which is social-emotional learning, social justice, gender confusion, and inappropriate books in our school libraries. CRT advocates that American culture is a conspiracy to perpetuate white conspiracy supremacy. What it does is divide all Americans along lines of race and gender and between oppressors and victims. It has for many years been on college campuses and has spread through public schools across the country. Key words in critical race theory are diversity, equity, and inclusion. In true Marxist fashion, these words are turned upside-down by CRT. In fact, diversity means one racial or gender group preference over others. Equity does not mean equality or equal treatment of all Americans under the law. It means that government must treat individuals unequally according to the color of their skin and in order to force equal outcomes. And inclusion, in fact, means exclusion. It often results in programs that lead to segregation and race quotas. An office of diversity, equity, and inclusion in our school systems is designed to spread as much CRT propaganda in classrooms and the minds of our children as possible. It is not the responsibility of school boards to induce racism into the classroom, but instead to teach basic skills and subject matter. You do not have free rein over our children, yet you're taking the responsibility for teaching programs of racism, gender confusion, and are causing emotional instability in vulnerable students. And I honestly ask, do you honestly want that responsibility? Federal and state money has strings and strings with Marxist programs. I wish you would just forget that and get back to the basics. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Linda Kobal. And Ms. Kobal, you'll have three minutes.
Good evening to you, our public servant leaders. I would like to take this opportunity at this time to read the North Carolina law regarding public open meetings. Quote, "North Carolina's Open Meeting Law, Chapter 143, Article 33(c) of the General Statutes sets out the requirements for notifying the public of official meetings and describes the limited circumstances under which closed meetings may be held. This is to assist public bodies in complying with their responsibility to conduct public business in the open," end of quote. This school board has had discussions and made decisions behind closed doors in closed meetings, thereby shutting out parents and taxpayers who support the schools. Policies are developed, set in motion, and transferred into the public school system without public notice. Other than private, personal cases which need closed-meeting discussion, when it comes to general policy that affect all students, why would you have closed meetings? And are you aware that folks on both the local level and the national level have been awakened, and they do care about this issue? As elected school board members, why wouldn't you expect to follow the letter of the law? And now, if you would like these elected school board members to follow the letter of the law, please stand up. And please stay seated if you are very comfortable with them not following the letter of the law. Thank you very much.
Next up, we have John Brigham. Mr. Brigham, you all have three minutes.
I want it tipped up. I saw her tip it down. I saw her tip it down. I want it tipped back up. It seems to be working particularly well, actually. Can you hear me? Okay, thank you. I want to present an image. This is a teacher's lunchroom in a high school. Eric is eating his daily sandwich. He's a history teacher, and he's tired. Sarah is a math teacher. She's eating her daily yogurt and fruit. She's been teaching all morning, and she's tired also. Kate walks in and is all excited. Janice Schwarzer has resigned! Whoa! Eric takes another bite and looks up. Sarah's not listening. Kate repeats, "Janice resigned!" Eric takes the bait. Who's Janice? Kate says, "She's the chairman of the school board." Eric is polite. He says, he replies, "Well, I hope she finds success." The point being that teachers in a healthy school district have no real awareness of the school board. The school board should be invisible. Anything from the school board that impacts the classroom will be destructive. The teachers in classrooms do not need help, at least not that kind. They know their job. The school board actually does not even know what they do. Closing the achievement gap implies that teachers are discriminatory. I don't believe this. The recent emphasis on social and emotional learning is insulting to at least 3,000 years of tradition in education. Let's pull the teachers out and tell them they need to include the whole students. All teachers know that better than you do. Everything that comes from the Asheville City School School Board that impacts on the classroom directly is destructive. The emphasis on equity contributes nothing to the education of anyone. These programs are the problem, and this is fundamental. The teacher works from a very personal platform, and that platform will not be changed by any outside influence. You're big power brokers. Yes, you are. But it's fun to terrorize teachers. It's fun to restructure. It's fun. Well, that may be, but you need to retreat. You have a superintendent. Let her do her job. The Asheville school system has distorted the school board into something it was never meant to be. The greatest intelligence comes from the room? There's no room. But we need to come together and figure out how to help students of color? No. You need to retreat. There's no reason why this -- there is a reason why the school board pays so poorly. You have distorted the school board into something that is not meant to be, and the plan is not working. Asheville City Schools needs change, and this is the simplest summary of the change that is needed. All any school can do is hire and fire, is hire the best teachers and then give them what they need, and stay out of the way. You're like teenagers. It's not about you. And there's a powerful upside. You can go home. I want to end with a shout-out to Liza and Jessie. There are two people in this room that are actually important in the Asheville City Schools. Jessie and Liza are teachers.
Thank you. Next up, we have Bill Robinson. And Ms. Robinson, you all have three minutes.
We can call this the bad news portion of tonight's agenda, because for all the good news, there's also bad news, of course. It only makes sense. Do any members of the school board, are there -- are any of you familiar with the name Kylie Mae Wilhelm? If you are, please raise your hands now. Okay? I'm not surprised. Are any of the school board familiar with the name Sabria Bozeman? If you are, please raise your hands now. Okay? So Kylie Mae Wilhelm committed suicide several weeks ago. I know not many people care about this, but I care. I went to her funeral. I'm not bragging. I went to her funeral. It was one of the toughest things I ever went through. Sabria Bozeman committed suicide in March. She was a 16-year-old high school student at Reynolds. She was the second young girl at Reynolds that committed suicide this year. Apparently, there have been seven suicides of young girls in the Asheville-Bunkham area over the last -- since the beginning of the year. That's statistically improbable. Something is going on with our young-girl students, and nobody's looking into it. Nobody seems to care. But it's really important that we protect our children. Not only are their little precious minds being destroyed, but their lives are being destroyed. They're committing suicide, and it's not because their boyfriend broke up with them or they're being bullied in the lunchroom. There's a lot more at work here. So I suggest that the board follow up on this and try to do something, because the students' lives are very important. It's not all about pride flags and Pride Month. Let's protect our children.
Thank you. Next up, we have Aaron Griffin. Mr. Griffin, you all have three minutes.
Thank you. I am alumni of Asheville City Schools as well. Just like the gentleman before me, and the young lady before me, and the young lady before me, it's a problem. We're not really dealing with structural determinants of health, or social, or how it affects our children. We're not even really doing what we need to do as far as safety in our schools. You know, it's obvious that when you have a principal have to call someone from this building to take care of a child, to see what to do about a child, then they're not ready. They're not trained properly. So in case there is a case of suicide, or mass shooting, or anything that happens at the school, we are not ready. And I'm frustrated about this. We're not doing anything about it. Nothing. We're not even prepared. So we got a big challenge ahead, a huge challenge ahead. As we celebrate today, we got a problem with safety, folks, and we need to move quickly. Bennett, I can't talk about this situation right now. Anybody who care, a parent, a father, anybody who care, I'd be willing to talk to you about this situation. Safety first. Don't just put it in the book. Do it.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Next up, we have Derek Edwards.
Good evening, folks. I'm gonna shift gears just a little bit and just celebrate for just a minute. Saturday night, we had what I think is my -- oh, I know, it's my favorite night of the year. We got to celebrate all of our students on our campus. It was a perfect night, perfect sunset, with about 375 perfect kids that all came across our stage, shook hands with everyone, gave them all diploma, hugs for most students who I've known since they were four and five years old. It just was a -- it just was a perfect night. And it was such a celebration. All of our students got 11 tickets for graduation, and that filled up our stadium on both sides, standing room only. Most of you all were there. Staff from all the other schools were there. It is such a great way. That's the benefit of our small district, is that all of our students come to that one campus. So we can all show up for that one celebration, and they feel it. Our students all felt it that day, so I wanted to end the night with a thank you. Not only thank you to you all, but also thank you to all of our educators, and that is literally all of our educators. Our bus drivers, our cafeteria folks, librarians, IAs, office staff, teachers, admin, and CO folks. We all come together for all of our kids all the time, and I just wanted to end the night on a big thanks to everyone who got all 375 of those kids across that stage Saturday. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Derek. And finally, we have Pepe Asiba. And Pepe, you all have three minutes.
Thank you very much. Members of the board, I do recognize that it's been a very difficult year for staff, and I am so grateful for all of our staff who have continued to show up day after day and take care of our kids. I want to acknowledge the fellow who brought up the mental health crises and the large number of suicide attempts and suicides that were -- that were carried out this past year in our county. I think the place that you need to take that, the place that I took it last week, was to the county commissioners. Right now, we are facing a huge budget shortfall. Most of the cases that you're talking about were in Bunkham County schools. This is Asheville City Schools. But still, I know very well, as well as any of you, what kind of toll the past couple of years has taken on our kids, and what a struggle it is to find the mental health services that we need. I acknowledge that it's a very complicated time. There, I see that some of the TikTok culture around lesbian, gay, bisexual, trans, some of that culture ties in suicidality, and it hurts. My kiddo is exploring all of these things as well, and I just need to give them as much support as possible. I did want to clarify something that was brought to the board last month. There was a speaker from Wake Forest who showed up and spoke very dramatically about porn books in the library. Turns out that the book that he was referring to, there is apparently one copy in Asheville City Schools in a middle school library. So some of you don't know me. I have been at these meetings, these school board meetings, almost every single one. For now, in August, it will be nine years. I come every month. I come several times a month to these meetings. I watch. I watch. Right now, this board, these members here, do not have an issue with meeting behind closed doors and making inappropriate decisions behind closed doors, but it has been an issue in the past. I will say about that one book, it's in the section of the library that requires parental consent. I gave parental consent to the media coordinator at my child's middle school, because I wanted my child to have access to truthful, accurate information. And so that's a decision that we're allowed to make as parents. Thank you.
Thank you, Pepe. That includes, that concludes in-person for public comment. Dylan, do we have anybody virtually?
We had one person sign up, but I don't think they ever showed up. April, are they there?
No.
Yeah. Okay. So that concludes public comment. Thank you, everyone. Moving on, we have our consent items. Those of you with an agenda in front of you can see the laundry list of closed and open session meeting, meeting minutes, as well as contracts for a variety of things discussed at our last work session, and also policy read discussed at our last work session. I'll open up to the board any questions about items on the consent agenda. Okay, so I'll ask for a motion.
So moved. Second.
A motion to, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
Move that we approve the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Second.
And it's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent items have passed. Thank you. Next, we'll move down to our action items. We'll start with our personnel report, number 10, presented to us at our last, and yes, in closed session at the last, at our last meeting.
Moved that we accept personnel report number 10.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Personnel report has passed. Next is the equity statement and working definition presented at our work session last week by the district equity team. Do we have any questions about that before we?
I just wanted to clarify that that, that the understanding is that that is a living document, subject to change and adaptation as we see fit.
Yes, thank you for bringing that up, Liza. Yes, it is, it is always a living document. And as Marta is not in the room, but she will be the first to remind us that those of us on, you know, as a district on this journey, there is no endpoint. And so it is always, we are all learners in the room, and so that is always going to be a living document.
Could we provide some clarification on how those changes might take place?
It's a great question. I, I mean, I, I, my, my feeling is it would go through committee, the district equity team. As a member of that, I can speak to that. I, you know, I would, I would, Marta unfortunately is not here tonight, so she can't speak directly to that, but those of us who serve on that committee, and there are others of us in this room, we are in those meetings, bringing what we're seeing in buildings, seeing out in the community, into those conversations. And so, yeah, it would be, it would go through that committee, but it can come from wherever to a person in that committee, and that can be in discussion.
It'll always come directly from any board member.
Yes, that's, yeah, thank you, Dr. Cosme. Yes, it can always come from a board member.
Thank you.
Anything else on that item? So I'll ask for a motion for approval of the equity statement.
I move that we adopt the equity statement as drafted.
It has been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, so equity statement has passed. Next is the local supplement recommendation, and I will, before I open that up, just remind those on the board and anyone else listening, that local supplement recommendation, if you don't have, if you're, if you're looking at the paper copy, includes a year of a kind of dual program, where folks can opt into receiving their supplement monthly or continue receiving it once a year for the next calendar, or the school calendar year, at which point in 2024, 25, it would become monthly. Are there any other questions or comments from the board on that?
Yeah, I just want to ask, you know, received a comment today from a staff member, and I'm curious about two things. One, what was the, and Dylan, you may be able to speak to this, how did we send out that survey? Was it just one email, or was it multiple emails? Does anybody remember?
I think it was multiple, at least two.
Okay.
It was multiple.
Okay, thank you. And then?
And we had a, we had a really, about almost 600 staff members respond, which is one of the best surveys we've ever done.
Right. And then, Georgia, can you speak just even generally to their savings of time or money that this policy will result in?
If you're speaking of the savings and time, money for the school system, one is the labor intense that the payroll department has in doing it once a year. We generally have multiple employees that have to work nights and weekends to make sure that that is complete. As far as employees, they will have the opportunity to invest that money into a savings account where they could earn interest, where now they cannot.
Okay. So you, so it's, so from the perspective of your shop, it does save hours, this is an efficiency measure.
Correct. And it also, when we look at a budget from month to month, it does give a clearer picture than waiting until May.
Anything else?
Georgia, while you're there, have you, since we last met, has your department had any chance to think about the informational meetings for helping staff to learn about summer savings accounts? When, where, how often, like the structure for that project next year?
So we have talked about having some at the central office and some in the schools, at least every other month.
Any other questions, comments about that?
I think the only other thing that I would acknowledge is that it was basically a tie vote. So I just think we should say that and acknowledge that, and so we, if, if we voted in favor of this, it's because we think there's a reason to do it, which, in my opinion, would be the efficiencies, assuming that those members of the staff who currently get it once a year will be able to take advantage of hopefully savings accounts that would sort of result in the same thing. But I do want to acknowledge that there are staff members who aren't happy with this, and I wish that every decision that we made could make everyone happy. I think in this instance, at least from my perspective, there have been enough reasons given that it makes sense to me, even looking at it as a budget, that it's easier to tell what we're paying folks month by month by having it paid that way. Thank you.
And I'd like to just also add how much I appreciate, Georgia, that your department in the, this year, is doing the extra work to allow people to choose, since I think that, to me, feels, it honors that it was really half and half. We, we did a tie vote. And so instead of everyone having to wait, or everyone having to start, this is a year where those who feel ready, that half, can say, "I would love to get going," and those who are not ready can say, "I want to wait and learn more," and hopefully we can roll out summer, access to summer savings, understanding what that is, how it works, so that next year, those who, who wish this wasn't happening at all, we can support them to structure their paychecks so that it feels like it's not happening for them at all.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Then I'll open it up for a motion to approve the local supplement recommendation.
I move that we approve the local supplement recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that is, the local supplement has passed. And finally, on action items, yes, this is the last one, the revised proposed resolution to prioritize public schools in 2325 biannual budget. This was something we discussed at the last work session. Dr. Cosme is reminding me that the revised proposal, they have added in that statement about the impact on local tax dollars and local property taxes, and what, what that does to the burden to county commissioners across the state. So I'll open up to questions or comments. And then I'll ask for a motion.
I move that we accept the revised proposed resolution to prioritize public schools in 2325 biannual budget.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that has passed. Thank you, board. Next, we have the superintendent's, no, I'm sorry, we revised the agenda. Next, we have Melissa Bates, who has, is going to share the results of a very long day today.
First, I just thank you for the opportunity, board, for me to give you an update on our RFP process for vendor services for school nutrition. We created a Verifai team, and we worked together to support the process. The team included all the cafeteria managers, board members, and assistant principal, a principal, CNI staff, and operations staff. In Verifai, in April, the Verifai team met to discuss the process and define the next steps. Members of the school nutrition staff visited two locations to experience school environments that already had vendor services. Possible vendors were invited to tour the kitchen at Asheville High School in our dining room. They were very complimentary of the kitchen and our staff, so that was very good from five experienced vendors, so. We also opened bids on May the 24th, and we received five bids, one from each vendor that attended the visit at Asheville High School. Then a core group of the Verifai team used the published rubric that was in the RFP to narrow down to three vendors, and then we presented that to the Verifai team, so they would know who we were going to expect oral presentations from. So today, that is what we had, the oral presentations from those three vendors. So it was a long day, but it was a good day. And we also had the opportunity to ask questions of the vendor, which was good. And Dr. Lynn Harvey, who is over School Nutrition Services at NCDPI, she came to observe the process, and she was very complimentary of how we were very much engaged, all our members was in the process, and the level of questioning and communication with the vendors and with each team member. So after all the presentations, we completed, each Verifai team member completed an evaluation rubric that we then tallied, and for each vendor, and it was decided that ChartWells would be the best fit for Asheville City Schools. And we would present that at the next board meeting for your approval.
All right, any questions?
Any questions? I'm sure there's lots.
Well, I, I am just curious about whether or not, I appreciate how inclusive the committee it sounds like, you had folks from everywhere. I know I've spoken with cafeteria staff who are not enthusiastic about this and don't want it to move forward, and I don't really know why, so I'm, I'm going to confess to that. What I'm curious about, though, is the, the sort of the concern that I have had in the back of my head rolling around is the concern about these employees, whoever's hired after we do this, will not be an employee of Asheville City Schools. Is that?
Correct. That's how the RFP was written.
Right. And so did you talk with employees at the various schools who were served by, was it Chartwell, is that?
Yes.
And did you ask them about their job satisfaction, and the, and I mean those who are not employees of that school system, but are employees of the contractor?
Correct. So I visited Burke County with three of my other managers, plus my assistant, and when I was in the kitchens, we went to four different schools, I could not tell a difference in that staffing, who was a district employee and who was a vendor employee. I couldn't tell.
Well, I, I, that's, I appreciate that. Did you happen to ask and say, "Those of you who are not members of the school system, how do you feel about your, the conditions of your employment?" Because I know what the conditions of employment are for Asheville City Schools employees, and that makes, gives me a certain amount of comfort, and I'm, and I also know that there are contractors who are awesome and provide great benefits and similar, or maybe even better than we do. And I've had situations where I was aware of contractors who didn't. So I gather, though, that that, those questions weren't asked of the employees.
No, I did not ask those.
Just out of sense that they were happy.
Of the, of the other school system employees. I did not.
Did you ask the, any of them how they liked their jobs, or how they like, you know, anything about?
Um, one of the managers, she had worked in a school system that operates like we do now, and she said this was the way to operate, through a vendor. She did forego that information.
Got you. Thank you.
Can I say something?
Sure.
I'm, I'm, I'm Travis Holt. I'm the cafeteria manager at Jones Elementary, and I went solo to Chapel Hill, where at Chapel Hill High School, there were 13 district employees still employ, well, excuse me, there were 13 district employees still employed for the district, and the rest were all Chartwell members. At the high school, there were two managers, one was a Chartwell manager, one was a retiring district employee. And to my knowledge, and I asked them directly how they felt working with each other, and how they felt as, specifically as a part of the community, and they felt, to me, they felt like it was a very natural progression. And they had been a, a company, with a company for a long time, but switched companies, so that is a caveat, but they, they had both district and company employees. They both felt that it was, they were a part of the community, and I got a sense from some of the kids that they felt comfortable with both, not really knowing who was part of who, you know? So I think it, and it has given some of my staff pause, because, just because it's, it's more of a not knowing what's coming next, as opposed to just not wanting to do it. It's not that they don't want to do it, it's that they don't know. So this was what this whole process was about, is trying to gather the information to give them and us that information that we could really grasp on to, to see if it's the best thing for the district. And I'm not saying that it is or isn't. It didn't seem completely negative, and I personally was going into it with a lot of questions, because I'm a, I'm a fairly new employee here, as opposed to like Purley, who's been here for quite some time, you know? I wanted to make sure that, you know, those who have been here a long time could keep a pension and keep their district, and it seems like, you know, there's always going to be a friction between a district employee and the, the company employee, but they try to work it out as best as possible in that kitchen, and then if it doesn't work out in the kitchen, then they go to the next level. And it, it seemed like there were steps to resolve any differences that were made.
Thank you.
I hope that answers your question a little bit. Yeah. Sorry.
Excuse me. I got one question.
Yeah.
Did the other managers from the other schools, cafeteria, did they all agree to make that switch over? Or was there a save, I mean, are we 100%? Is the manager 100% behind this new change that's going to be made? this new change that's gonna be made?
I believe that we understand that something needs to happen. And that it, I believe that after this process that we are, I mean, I'm, I can speak personally that we're on board with it. I know some people have a lot of reservations about it.
But you spoke with your colleagues, the other managers. So it's just like two to, two against, five not against, is it five against two?
It's not 100%, but I can't give you a full-on answer of that. I, I know that there are some that have reservations about it that are still just gonna move forward because they feel that that's the inevitable next step.
Because the Board asked us to get more information, do you remember that?
Yes.
We did, we, cafeteria managers first. We had several hard conversations as a group, because we had a lot of questions. And then we, Melissa met with them some more and then we made the decision to put everyone on a Verifai team so they would understand that process. So, like Travis said, we agreed that we had to do something and this felt like the most appropriate next choice. So we made sure that the RFP was written in a way that supported what the cafeteria managers wanted for their staff. It's also important to note that the cafeteria managers are still the managers of everyone who works in that kitchen, including Chartwell staff. So they are the direct supervisor and they work closely with the company.
They are for now.
Correct. Until the cafeteria managers leave.
And then they will not be.
That is true, but we do have a key person who works for us who supports the cafeteria managers. So in theory, no, not ever, we don't, it's not kumbaya. And, but the questions that were asked and some of the feelings, we were able to work together through that. We still have some questions. I think you had some good questions today about benefits and what's that gonna look like? And we're still trying to do that together. But we all came to the conclusion that we have to do something and this felt like the best approach by working together to pick the company that we would go with. And we wrote the RFP in a way that we had high standards. This is what we want, increase participation by X percent. How, get us out of the red. How do we keep morale up? How do we train our staff? How do we recruit? How do we make our cafeterias more appealing? How do we create menu items that are more attractive to staff and students? Innovative ideas. And I think we had an enjoyable time talking about that and our staff that got to visit really learned a lot and they were able to come back and report to their colleagues.
And I think the visits to the other districts kinda reassured our staff that it might not be a bad decision.
Okay.
The unknown is scary.
I mean, I, I...
My, my job's gonna change completely.
I would, I would really welcome staff feedback on this, like if, you know, whoever was involved in this conversation, I would really like to, to hear from school nutrition staff. You know, the good, the bad, and the ugly, all impressions. If they wanna just email us as a board, I, I just think that that's really valuable.
I would be happy, I mean, I went to Chapel Hill. I was the only nutrition employee that went to Chapel Hill. I didn't get to go to Burke County 'cause I had an employee sick, but I'd be happy to answer any of your questions. And I, I'm honestly, you know, I was very skeptical. And I still have a lot of questions about how it would happen moving forward. But seeing how Chapel Hill worked with both district employees and company employees in the same kitchen, working together, it, it, it helped me see where this could be a working option for the, for this district. Now, I see a lot of, I see some heads shaking no and stuff and I understand that. But, you know, we're all just working through this as best we can. I am trying to help my employees understand this and we know that something has to give because we can't keep going, being in the red every single year. It's just not feasible, giving how employment's rising as well as food costs and feeding the kids, you know, what we can out of what we're given.
That's what I was gonna ask, if you could give us, from your perspectives, there's been several references, "We can't keep going like we're doing." To lay out what are the circumstances that cause you to feel we cannot keep going the way we're going?
Well, financially is, you know, of course, the major one. We don't have enough participation to generate revenue to cover our expenses.
When you say participation, what are your requirements?
So, participation is how many students eat with us per day. We only get funds, we call reimbursement, if a child eats with us.
Is it guaranteed that they're still gonna eat with us if, if we make this change?
Well, with going to a vendor, they have the buying power that we, as a small district, do not have. So they can offer more items, more choices for the students than we currently do.
That, for me, as a manager, is one of the largest enticing things to see because, for example, I didn't order rolls one time. I happened to have flour. I happened to, I went and bought wheat flour and asked Melissa if I could, if I could make focaccia bread instead and she allowed me to do that 'cause she had seen the recipe that I used that was completely compliant with all the regulations and everything. Now, I had wheat flour on hand, I was able to do that, but I couldn't order that just from Cisco because our contract is not big enough. Something like that may be able to be useful and I asked every single employee, possible company that would work for us if they would allow me to do that in the future and they said, "Yes, absolutely." So for me, that seemed, it seems like the, the pool of food that we can draw from, from Cisco, or mo, most of them use Cisco. It seems like they have a larger pool of food and product that we can use to allow us to make more types of food and allow the menus to be a little more different and a little more reflective of what we would like kids to try as opposed to having the same thing every day. Again, I'm not advocating for either way. I have my own feelings about this sort of stuff, but it just, you know, the, it is one positive. It is such a large company, they have a huge contract with Cisco. That means they are, we're allowed to get more product in that can help me build stuff from scratch as opposed to just opening up a bag. You know, I cooked in restaurants for 14 years before coming to the schools. I, it's, it's a passion of mine to get back to scratch cooking and I'd be vehemently opposed to this if they were going the other way and none of these companies did and that was one of my major concerns, so.
Okay, I got one more question for you.
Yeah.
If we know that we are in the red and kids are not eating, are we still making the same amount of food that, instead of cutting it down, maybe to...
No, they adjust their...
We adjust the numbers based on how many we think we're gonna do, like last year.
Why can't the school system do the same thing? I mean, you know, if we know that kids are not eating, why are we still cooking for 500 when we can just still cook for 200 or 300?
It's the supply and the cost of food and labor has increased dramatically since the pandemic.
It's still gonna increase with, if we get someone else in. It's still gonna be just as expensive over a period of time, right?
No, they have huge buying power, so their food would cost them less.
Are, are we able to utilize any of the products that are produced on our campus gardens or from our campus gardens?
Yes, that was the one thing. I wanted to go back and answer Amy's question. The reason we chose Cartwell was because they insisted on following the needs and wants of our district. We don't have to have our employees' child nutrition turn over to work for Cartwell. They said if we wanna keep our workers, keep them. They just wanna make sure that Melissa and our staff had the resources to be able to do the kind of meals that they presented today. They were excellent and I am a foodie. They were excellent, high quality. All the educational programs, they partner with local chefs here to work with the managers to come up with creative meals. They tried their best to do all local. It was just phenomenal and like Melissa said, the buying power. Chartwell's is number one in buying power. Whereas Melissa would have to hunt, search Cisco, come get, you know, bring this and because we are not a buying power school district, we may not even get that product. But because we're going through Cartwell's, they are the number one buying power of Cisco and other places. So we would not miss out on anything. So we don't have to turn our workers over. They said that is left up to Melissa and the district. And the community engagement piece was another one for us. Cartwell's was just it. I mean, just like our dream board, they, they the dream. To say, "All things are possible" and because we're on a one-year contract with them, they work for us. We don't work for them. So if something's not working within that year, bring it back to the table. What do you want? You wanna turn Cartwell's, turn Cartwell's. I mean, it was like a open, "This is what we can guarantee. This is what we can build up to with your help."
So can we, can we...
To answer more specifically, they said that I can't, I can't use the food directly from my, I built three raised beds at Jones just this year. I can't use that food in the school to serve kids directly unless there's, the DP, the lady from DPI said, "There's a certification that can happen where I might be able to do that." But until then, I could, they talked about you doing sharing tables or sampling tables where kids could come by and try. We could make something like, you know, bruschetta from the tomatoes or something like that where they could come by and try it and they can see that it came from this garden, we made it this way, here it is now and that they can see the full cycle and learn something from that.
I'm, I'm just, I'm looking through their website as, as I'm listening to y'all and, you know, I'm, I'm seeing that they have, you know, engagement is one of their, their principles that, that they strive for and, you know, I have curiosity about like whether, whether children can be involved in the, the garden of food preparation and then also...
It seems like they have, will have ta, taste testings at least monthly, if not more. And if I came to them with a recipe or something, I would certainly get together a team with Ms. Cobb of students who could try it out and say yea or nay and that sort of thing. And they said they could turn it around and have it on the menu within two weeks. But it is, they do have a set way to get the students involved directly.
From the, from the school garden?
It could be from the school garden. They didn't speak directly about that.
Okay.
They were talking about just food in general, but given their openness to do pretty much anything for us to get, I think that they would be open towards the school gardens and I would certainly be open to making anything that would help kids expand their minds in terms of what foods are available to them or what food can be available to them.
Thank you. So I very much appreciate the process that you all have been through. I appreciate how it was designed. I appreciate how you have gone through it. I, I wanna say a couple of things or, or sort of just what's going on in my head. One of them is that I'm not hearing you say, "We really want this to happen." I'm hearing you say, "We were presented with the fact that it needed to happen" and then given sort of, "We, we create, we crafted our ideal situation if we had to make this change" and that's great. I, am I wrong that a new employee who would be hired into the cafeteria after the date that we contracted with this company would be the company's employee and not Asheville City Schools? Tanya, you're... Are you sure?
No.
Not just current employees, but future employees? I, I need to, I need to get a lo...
So, I was under the impression and have been that, that they would be contract with us and that anybody that came in with them would be their employee. If I'm wrong about that, I wanna, I wanna know that because, and I hear you, Tanya, Ms. Prichet. And I, I trust you that that's what you heard, but I wanna see something in writing from them because I want to understand the implications for future employees as well as current employees.
We'll, we'll have a clarification for you before we bring it back to you.
Thank you. And, and then I guess the other thing that just, you know, for me, in my head is, there's just sometimes these, we, we are presented with these opportunities to contract with private companies and it's always presented as a really positive experience. And it, it just doesn't always come out that way. And I understand that it's a year-to-year contract, we could change our minds, we could do whatever, but I approach this with some skepticism, as you can tell by my questions. And I'm open to it for sure, especially if our employees want, actively want to do this. Otherwise, I'm interested to just not, I don't wanna feel pressured into making this decision very quickly without feeling like we have the information, at least for me, that I feel like I wanna have and I don't quite, I'm not quite there. But I, not your fault, you guys have done wonderful work. Staff has done excellent work. No criticism of anybody. This has just come up kinda quickly for, for me.
So, I would like to say, so I've served, I was asked to serve on the committee as a board representative. Unfortunately, I could not make it today because of my new job. But, yeah, I was happy, sort of. But, and, and honestly, if I would have made it, it would have been for the second and third ones and that's not fair to do that. So I just pulled myself out. But I will say that, you know, having gone through this process last year, going through the RFP training, which Melissa and I and Georgia sat through, what, four hours? At least of, of training for that last year. And then seeing what the RFPs and everything that went out this year and then looking, having the opportunity to see what the presentation was gonna be from all three that they looked at today. I, I understand that there is hesitation from, from some board members for this. This is something that we have the opportunity to, you know, I keep hearing like cost savings and things. The moment that, you know, since I've been on the Board since 2019, we have been in the red every year in our child nutrition funds, which means that we have to pull from local funds in order to balance that every year. And it's not getting any better. And so if this is something that I feel that, that I look at, that we can actually save, I've had experience with Chartwell's at UNC Asheville and other locations around the state. They do an excellent job. The food, I think, has, has always been top-notch. And so personally, you know, I, I'm not saying that we need to push to vote for this, but right, right away 'cause we're not gonna vote on it right now. But Melissa, give us a timeline of what you're looking at because I know you have things that you have to do. So what is your timeline?
Well, we have several bids that will be expiring the end of the month and the transition would start for the vendor July 1st. That's the current timeline. And we can also provide you a copy with the proposal from Chartwell if you would like to, to read what they presented to us.
We'll get, we'll get that all out to you. I've hesitated to say much 'cause I don't wanna, I'm, I'm leaving, so I don't wanna be sticky with something and may leave you with it. But I would share with you that this process and the folks who have been involved with it have done tremendous amount of work. And there are reasons to need to do something different. Our, we're a small system, almost all small systems across the country are having issues with being able to break, even, even break even in food service programs. I've had the pleasure of working two times in Chapel Carboro and working with Chartwell's. It was fantastic. I cannot overemphasize how much it took off of the worry about the school system and having to, to run that program. The food was excellent. It was always, things were run extremely well. Any kinds of issues that were discussed was, were taken care of. Uh, the food was excellent. There was always, things were run extremely well. Any kinds of issues that were discussed was, were taken care of almost immediately. And it was just a very, very good experience. The food improved, participation improved. And they not only did they do that, but they would provide all the catering and all the kinds of things that we need in the school system. I, I don't remember a percentage, but something like 70% of what we were paying for normal kinds of catering and stuff. So that's also a big saving. Because we, we buy a lot of food and we do a lot of activities. And they would turn all that around. So, you know, I will not be here and I'm not, I'm going to make a recommendation on it one way or the other. But my experiences with it have been excellent. And my experiences with the folks who worked for cafeteria staff, they were very satisfied and very pleased. But you will not get that to that point until people have experienced it. You can't expect people to give you feedback on something that they have not yet done.
Can we get, um, also, uh, at least, maybe we have it somewhere. I'm not familiar, aware of it. But I'd like to see the, the comparison of what we expect to save. I mean, what the financials are. I have, I don't know if I've seen the, um, sort of what we're paying now, what we, how we're in the red and what this contract provides in terms of, um, costs to us and expected costs. Thank you.
Yes, we, we will get you all that information, uh, all this next week. This session tonight was just to catch you up on where things are because they just, just finished meeting. But we can put online again for you.
We will have to vote on this though, one way or the other before July 1. Right? Unless we just.
We, we need a yes or no. And time to transfer or not transfer July 1.
Right. So thinking about that in terms of this board and recognizing that, um, that, you know, now that we are seven versus five and, and recognize that we're now in the summer and et cetera. Um, just to kind of corral all this together, I'm hearing that we, that board members would like to see, first of all, I, I agree, I would love to see that proposal, um, in writing, um, a, a cost comparison where the savings are. Um, well, I'd like to ask for some feedback directly from, um, some of our food service staff. Um, so, uh, you know, I know I'm not necessarily putting it on our cafeteria managers, but cafeteria staff, you know, those are listening, that kind of stuff. If you have comments, um, as, as Liza said, good, bad or ugly, that you want to share with the board, uh, we would encourage you to do so. Um, I'm getting the sense though that we'll need to see that, like if, you know, there's conversation around what, when do we get this done by July 1? Um, it sounds to me like, um, more discussion needs to happen once we get that information, um, once we see the proposal, once we see cost comparison and once we get some feedback. Am I, am I right in the, from the board? Is that what I'm hearing? So it's not necessarily the next time we meet, we absolutely have to vote. It sounds like the next time we need to meet is to review those things. Am I correct on that? I mean, I'm seeing nods. Okay.
Well, I think we theoretically could review them and still vote at the same meeting.
Okay.
Um, I also would like to say that I, I just would, well, I was thinking about the, the staff that I've talked to who are really against this. I, I'm curious about what their perspectives is, are and why, um, what they fear. Um, so including with the feedback, maybe at least some feedback from folks who feel pretty strongly that they don't want this and so that we can understand what they're worried about would be helpful to me.
So with that being said, we've got to decide, you know, when do we want to meet again about this? Now, um, you know, we've, we've got a, a little bit more than half a month left to, to work on this. Um, we do have, of course, a meeting scheduled, which we'll talk about in more detail in a moment. Um, at the end of the month, that's really about, more about budget. Um, so we could say, I mean, that next Monday is a possibility, that which would be June 19th. Um, oh, you're right, it's Juneteenth. So yeah, that would not, maybe that, that's not the day. Um, but yeah, figure out a day that we can gather about this. Um, so I, I guess we'll just throw it out there as far as some other dates that might work for us.
Tuesday, the 20th?
I mean, I'm on vacation, um, and I would really like not to work. Um, but, you know, I'll do what I have to do. I, I wonder if we can combine it with the budget or is that just too much?
I think that, that honestly may be too close. I mean, that's the 29th and not having a decision. If we don't have a decision on the 29th or if we can't come to something on the 29th, she has to have these contracts done by the first of July. So this is, in my personal opinion, um, we need to go ahead and meet, uh, if not next week, then the following week, you know, quickly. Uh, you know, it'd have to be before the 29th. Uh, just to make sure that Melissa has the time that she needs going into July to have that stuff ready. My personal opinion.
Do you have to have it? I mean, why can't we decide on the 29th?
We're having summer feeding right now, starting Wednesday.
She's got a lot going on.
So we couldn't decide on the 29th? That would be too late for you? And that's okay if it is?
I think that's really pushing. I, I feel very anxious about that.
That's great. Then thank you for that. And that's what I want, is your candor.
Unless you've got to have bids and stuff ready to go out if we don't do this.
Correct.
Well, that's process our own bids.
Pushed it to today so that our staff who work in schools could be a part of the proposal process. So we purposely waited till school to get out so we could bring in the vendors so our staff could engage in it more. So that was intentional. But we knew it was a tight turnaround.
So like, like Amy, I'm also out of town, um, that, the next week. But if that's when, if that's when we need to meet, I mean, it would have to, obviously, it would have to be virtual. Um, and it would be great if I, you know? But if that's what we got to do, then that's what we got to do.
I'm just putting, okay. I don't know if it's enough time. I'm trying to acknowledge you guys are on vacation. I mean, there's Monday, the 26th. I mean, that's three extra days ahead of the 29th. I don't know if that's enough. I, I understand that.
Is that enough for you, Melissa? If it was Monday, the 26th?
I mean, that's, that's a few more days than the 29th. It'd be better than the 29th.
So I, I recognize it's better than the 29th. And is that the only, I mean, is it only that it's better than the 29th? Or do you think you could get, if, if?
Are you wait all next week, Amy?
Yes.
Yes, I am. Um, and I'm trying to be protective of that time, I will tell you. I need, I need a break. Um, so I would prefer the 26th if it can happen then. And if it can't, then I will join you next week.
Could we, could we meet on Thursday or Friday of this week? Is that?
It's a matter of how long you want the materials and things to look at, how quick we can turn it around.
I would prefer to get it done this week.
How quickly could we get the materials that we've discussed? And staff feedback?
I would suggest if it's acceptable staff feedback, that we send out an email to a food service employees and let them know that they can, we'll give them your email addresses and let them, say to them, if you have any information you'd like to share with board members, please do so.
Yes, please.
Yep.
Get your direct feedback.
Perfect. That's great.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so yeah, let me ask that of the board.
Wednesday night, Thursday night, Friday night.
Could we, could we not do? Could we do Friday?
I can do Thursday.
Thursday? Is that Thursday evening?
Yeah.
Okay. Yep, I can do that. And that gives us time to know.
Fifteenth.
Sarah, is that, there's some reason I had it in my head that you were?
I'm on vacation.
That's what I thought. Yeah. All right, so.
Right, so I'm driving back tomorrow morning. So I'm just listening. And depending on when you guys have it, I may join by Zoom or I may defer. I'm just listening, but yeah, I'm out this week. It's just a tough time of year.
Nope.
It's a tough time.
I think this week is better for, you guys just keep going. I'm just not commenting.
So the 15th at 5 o'clock? I think that's. Sarah, you could, you could always zoom in if you needed to or?
Right.
What's the rule? Like, do we have to be at every single meeting? I need someone to tell me that.
No, you don't.
Okay.
You don't have to be.
Because that way if Sarah doesn't or doesn't, you know, it's not the end of the world if you can't visit, if you can't.
But I'm missing August, so I'm trying to be like responsible.
It's time 3-3, we'll call you for a load.
Yeah.
April, when you send out that message, um, I mean, I don't, I don't know if everyone has, has shared their phone numbers, but just in terms of accessibility, if, if staff would like to contact me via, via text or call, text is probably better because I have small children, but, um, that's perfect. Yeah. Yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
Yes.
Thursday 5.
Yep. Thursday 5 or for Jesse, 1700.
And we'll get the announcement out on that.
Yep. Thank you, Melissa. Thank you for the cafeteria staff. Thank you for, to the, um, verification team, James. Thank you for doing all that. And yeah, we'll appreciate y'all working quickly to turn that stuff around to us so we can have some good information. Dr. Cosby, next on the agenda.
Thank you very much. And I'm proud to announce that this is my last superintendent's report at a regular meeting. So you can cheer if you want to. Or you can cry or whatever you want to, but, but whatever. But I do have a, just a few things to, to share with you. Uh, you heard a report from, uh, Principal Derrick on the graduation, but it really was a fantastic night Saturday evening. I think all of you were there. And it was very enjoyable. One, one of the best run, I think, smoothest and probably the most joyful type of graduation. Uh, you know, I, I've experienced, I, someone asked me today, how many graduat- these graduations have you been a part of? And I, I don't have any idea. There's been, there's been so many of them over 30-some years. I just have no idea. But this was certainly one, one of the very best that I've ever been associated with. And it was a pleasure shaking, uh, 375 hands as they came across the stage and probably a few more than that because those parents who presented them to them, I got them also. I didn't let them get off. But I did, did have to put a lot of liniment on my right arm the next, next morning, but it was, it was a pleasure. Uh, quick report from Equity and for your information, Marty is on vacation. That's why she's not here tonight. Uh, continuing to have staff members attend the two-day REI workshop. Uh, she's also continuing meeting with small groups about Equity efforts and caucusing and partnership with the Asheville City Schools Foundation, working on to continue anti-racist practices in the school system. Human resources, uh, in, in full speed ahead as far as recruiting and trying to hire folks. And also had a great retirement event this morning that you heard mentioned. I think helped me, Kim, was a total 310 years of employment for those folks. And eight months, okay? 310 years and eight months of total combined employment for the folks who retired, retired this year. So just, just some great folks. And I spoke with them about their future and what they can do in retirement and gave them a lot of information about how in six months they'll go and get an email or a postcard from Kim saying that we have jobs available. You, you served your six months absence out of the system. You can now come back and work for us if you'd like to. And I expect some of them, by six months, might, might be interested in doing that. Operations, of course, finishing up the RFP process on child nutrition that you've just been talking about. Also wrapping up the process of preparing the 2324 Code of Student Success to have that ready for next school year. And finalizing the transition to Parent Square. I think all of you have heard of that. That will be our new district-wide communication platform being used, starting immediately. It has just tremendous things that you can do with it, much better than what we could do. Uh, I remember, I think you're some board, you got one recommendation this year asking for some system where parents could sign up online for field trips. Parent Square does all of those kinds of things. So it's going to give us one, one piece of technology that we can do all the kinds of things and communications. Our curriculum instruction, as another school year is wrapped up, we now give gear up for summer programming. We now have, I have 700 students, I believe, who enrolled in eight, eight, over 600, between 600 and 700. Summer programs from preschool through high school. Our summer's programming will begin June the 14th and the programs will run through July 27th. An elementary summer learning website has been created and shared with elementary school families. This site contains resources and links designed to engage students with learning over the summer. And we can, we can get you the link to that if you'd like to have it. The District MTSS, which stands for Multi-Tierred Systems of Support Team, has been working to revise the ace, our, our, our plan, our handbook, which will include the following new vision statement. In Asheville City Schools, we work together and partner with families to create inclusive learning environments where each student thrives and feels safe, valued and seen through a multi-tiered system of supports. Uh, I think that sums it up very, very nicely. They did a nice job with that. Our exceptional children leadership has been working with elementary schools and CNI to complete their state identified measurable results analysis of the impact of chronic absenteeism on student outcomes in each school. And student absenteeism is a real issue since COVID everywhere. Every school district I talk to are having the same kinds of issues. The strategies to address chronic absenteeism will be built into school improvement plans and shared with state and district leadership later this summer. My, and media and technology, implementing North Carolina DPI's data security standards. As over half of ransomware attacks in the United States target K-12 education services, we need to be certain our partners are protecting private student information appropriately. Every third-party service that handles student data must confirm their adherence to the data security standards. We're actively reaching out to our list of third-party vendors, ensuring they're informed about the standards and capable of meeting the requirements. Parent Square training for athletic coaches as well as school and district administrators. Parent Square allows schools to send messages, share important updates, collect electronic signatures and facilitate collaboration between parents, teachers and administrators in a secure and convenient manner. And the CNI team is preparing for 10 professional development sessions for teachers in August, ranging from training on core curriculum to effective instructional practices. Uh, we've been also in contact with county commissioners, following up on our budget request. I know some of you are making those contacts also. I would encourage you to continue to do, do that and encourage them to do everything that they, they can possibly do. Uh, if you remember, we discussed probably a couple of months back, the county had expressed an interest in doing something with an EMS station at the Asheville primary school site. And at that time, we asked attorneys to discuss it. They have been doing that and have come up with some possible ways of doing that. The county has said they would like to pursue some discussion on that sometime in the near future. And you may hear them say something publicly about it before that begins. So don't be surprised if you hear it. Nothing has been agreed to or even discussed yet. So before you hear it, I just want to know, let you know that you may, may hear it out there. As far as the new superintendent, uh, I think you've done a great job in making that selection. Maggie will be here in our school system Wednesday of this week. She will visit high schools that morning. She'll have lunch with central office staff in the middle of the day and she'll visit elementary schools that afternoon. Uh, she and I plan to spend approximately an hour together Wednesday to begin our planned sharing sessions and develop a plan of transition and how I can best be of service to her. So those are the last things I want to share with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cosby. Um, that is really everything on our agenda. However, I do want to, um, I'll just very quickly remind everyone that we did, um, for future meetings, we have now put this meeting on Wednesday, the 15th. We've also got a, um, special called work session, closed session on the 29th. Time to be decided. That's going to be, um, um, our, in response to whatever county commissioners give us, um, which is Tuesday, I believe, when they, the 20th is when they release their budget. So, um, we'll meet and discuss how we move forward with that. Um, as Dr. Cosby said, this is. As Dr. Cosby said, this is his final, that was his final superintendent report. This is Dr. Cosby's final official, um, regular session, regular board meeting. Of course, he, unfortunately, he got to sit with you two more with us, but. But we wanted to share our appreciation for what you have brought to this district during your time with us. You will be sorely missed sitting up here alongside us here on the board. We're grateful for the stability, your honesty, your openness, your transparency that you've, that you've given to Asheville City Schools. And so in your final, um, regular board meeting, we wanted to thank you for sitting alongside with us and being engaged in this work. So if we can, just take a moment and give our appreciation to Dr. Cosby. And while he's unwrapping it. While he's unwrapping it, there are, for, I believe this is for the district on Wednesday, drop-in appreciation for Dr. Cosby, both in the morning at 8:30 and then the afternoon at 3:30, drop-in appreciation for Dr. Cosby this week. And with that, unless there, well, first, is there anything else from members of the board? And I will ask for a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?